Good morning. It is 10:00 AM on May 30, 2019. Welcome to the Department of Motor Vehicles Public Hearing on its Regulatory Proposal, which was published in the California Regulatory Notice Register on April 12, 2019, with notice number 2019-0402-02. This proposal amends California Code of Regulation Sections 227.26 and 227.28 in Article 3.7, and Section 228.02 in Article 3.8, related to the testing and deployment of autonomous vehicles. My name is Brian Suble. I'm the Chief Counsel at the Department of Motor Vehicles, and I'm also the department's contact person for this regulatory proposal. I'll be the chairperson for this hearing. We are here today in the Assembly Room at the Department of Motor Vehicles at 2415 First Avenue, Sacramento, California, to accept comments on the regulatory proposal, which I identified earlier, and was titled "Autonomous Vehicles: Motor Trucks." Under the rulemaking provisions of the California Administrative Procedures Act, this is the time and place set for presentation of statements, arguments, and contentions orally or in writing for or against the changes in the Department of Motor Vehicles regulations. This is a quasi-legislative hearing in which the Department of Motor Vehicles carries out a rulemaking function delegated to it by the legislature. People presenting comments at this hearing will not be sworn, nor will we engage in cross-examination of witnesses; however, we may ask follow-up or clarifying questions. We will take under submission all written and oral statements made or submitted during this hearing. We will respond to those comments in writing in the final statement of reasons. This DMV rulemaking hearing will be recorded and transcribed. The transcription, together with all exhibits and evidence presented during this hearing, will be made a part of the rulemaking record. The record of this hearing will be kept open until the close of business today, 5:00 PM, Thursday, May 30, 2019, in order to receive additional relevant evidence in writing from all interested parties. DMV has presented one three-part exhibit, which was packaged together and made available at the table at the back of the room. Part one is the Notice of Proposed Action, which was published in the California Regulatory Notice Register on April 12. Part two is the express terms, or the proposed language, of this action. And part three is the statement of reasons for the proposal. Copies of these documents were mailed to all interested parties who had requested rulemaking notices from the department, and all other interested parties who may be affected by the proposal. The department appreciates the many comments we have received expressing support for the proposed regulation. The scope of this hearing is limited to receiving comments, statements, and contentions on the regulation as proposed. I encourage those of you who wish to speak to focus your comments on the regulation as proposed, which can be identified as the underlying text in the express terms. We are not accepting comments on provisions of the regulations that are not part of this regulatory proposal. If you have other issues you wish to be considered by the department as regulations, you may petition the Department of Motor Vehicles pursuant to Government Code Section 11347. Those other issues will not be considered at this hearing. As you entered the room, you were offered the opportunity to sign in or register for the hearing. The purpose for this registration is to allow us to provide an orderly schedule for those persons who are present and wish to speak. It also ensures that any changes we make to the rulemaking proposal will be mailed to you before we finalize those changes, and provides you with the opportunity to comment again on any changes that we make. You can sign in for the hearing at any time. We'll listen to oral comments for this proposal from those who signed in, and after we hear from those who initially registered to speak on the proposal, we'll hear from anyone else who arrived and wishes to speak. So with that, I'm going to start and call up our first registered speaker, who is Julie Krueger.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you.
I'm Judy Krueger with the Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation, and I represent an industry cluster that is growing in California unlike any other region in the U.S. We have a job-creating cluster that is mostly clean energy, electric, that is now working in autonomous systems. And we are speaking on behalf and in support of the DMV regulatory changes, and we see this as a job creator for the state. As we all know, California is way ahead of the curve in good policy, clean energy policy, and also all things very innovative, electric, autonomous, and we see this regulation as supporting this industry that supports job growth. It's anticipated that the autonomous vehicle spend will be $556 billion by 2027, and that's by the Allied Market Research. And so again, we see this as a job creator for the state. And again, unlike any other region in the U.S., we have a cluster of vehicle companies and software companies and new technology growing in the state. We'd love to see that grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Xantha Brusso.
Hi. My name is Xantha Brusso, and I'm here on behalf of AAA Northern California. A recent AAA survey found that while 44% of Americans are comfortable with AVs delivering food or packages, seven out of 10 Americans are afraid to ride in an AV. So AAA Northern California is working to address both the safety of and consumer confidence in AVs so that they can deliver on their expected promise, including making both passenger service and the transportation of goods safer and more efficient. AAA Northern California believes that carefully supervised testing of autonomous motor trucks in the environment in which they will be commercially operated is important to ensuring their safe deployment in California. So we support the DMV's amendment to allow autonomous motor trucks to be tested and deployed in California. AAA Northern California also supports the DMV's amendment that precludes manufacturers from receiving compensation for transporting goods while testing AVs on public roads. Assessing AV's functionality should be the primary focus while testing on public roads. Working to satisfy customer demands while a vehicle is still being tested could detract from that focus and potentially compromise safety. In closing, we appreciate the DMV's careful consideration of our written and oral comments, and look forward to continuing to engage with you and other stakeholders in this process. Thank you.
Katie Agnadi? I should apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name. Please go ahead and give the correct pronunciation in the record.
Thanks. Good morning. It's Katie Agnadi. I'm here on behalf of the San Francisco Municipal Transportation Agency. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments today. I wanted to first acknowledge the difference in the comments that we submitted in response to the proposed regulations last week and what we expressed in the public workshop in October. Since then, we have come to appreciate the many new developments in this quickly changing industry, and have identified different opportunities that are worth consideration. In complex stents urban areas such as San Francisco and Los Angeles, and I want to note that we submitted our written comments jointly with LADOT, we see unprecedented demand for valuable curb space, and we're pursuing proactive and data-driven measures to both understand and manage it. In light of increased demand for curb space arising from ride-hailing, courier network services, and new AV business models, the SFMTA is in the process of developing a citywide curb management strategy and conducting detailed location-based curb management planning in specific corridors. Similarly, LADOT is working to digitally inventory its curb regulations and develop tools that will allow for dynamic, active curbside management. Detailed documentation of the impacts of unauthorized stopping and parking maneuvers on street safety, as well as on transit performance and congestion, play an important role in this planning and management work. The proposed regulation under consideration may spur an important change in testing behavior that will impact our curb management efforts. While we don't object to automated delivery vehicle testing on California streets and acknowledge their potential and economic and environmental benefits expressed by the previous speaker and what you'll probably hear more about today, the potential change in testing behavior creates a new area of study that would be best informed by new documentation requirements. In order to deploy passenger delivery services in an urban setting, we believe a permitty must test and ultimately demonstrate the ability of automated driving system, of the automated driving system, to stop or park a vehicle in the curb safely. It may be counterintuitive, but curbside behavior has generated many safety incidents in the past. A recently published MTA bicycle crash analysis that analyzed all reported bicycle crashes in San Francisco between 2011 and 2015 found that curbside parking contributed to 310 bicycle crashes. Nineteen of these collisions resulted in severe injury or death. In another SFMTA study of curbside and parking behavior by Courier Network Services, couriers themselves reported using a variety of prohibited stopping locations to perform their work, including travel lanes, bike lanes, bus lanes, as well as loading zones meant for vehicles with commercial licenses. Because adoption of the proposed amendments could accelerate testing, the capacity of AV delivery vehicles to stop and park safely at the curb, we recommend that the California DMV expand not only the permissible vehicles that can be tested, but also the public accountability and reporting requirements in Articles 3.7 and 3.8. Specifically, we request and recommend requiring delivery vehicles to display the manufacturer's trade dress and develop an email, phone, or internet portal so members of the public can effectively report their observations about AV delivery vehicles testing on public roads directly to the DMV. Public observations will help alert state and local governments to issues that may warrant investigation or a policy response. Secondly, we recommend that existing AV reporting requirements for mileage, collisions, and disengagements be administered in such a way that enables the public to distinguish between those involving delivery vehicles and those involving passenger vehicles, as those behaviors may be significantly different. Finally, we recommend requiring delivery vehicles document the time, location, and dwell time associated with curbside stopping and parking in compliance with local curb regulations. We go into great detail in our written comments as to why we think that those three specific data points are important, but in short, it will allow our local traffic engineers to consider modifying local regulations related to stopping and parking limitations to improve safety and better facilitate the safe integration of AVs with local traffic. I want to underscore that we have no interest in seeking data that cannot be effectively used. For this reason, we propose that the DMV hold a workshop prior to finalizing the regulations for industry and government that focuses explicitly on documentation requirements for testing and facilitates potential public-private agreement on a data specification without creating an undue burden on the industry. While AV companies will test their products on public roads, their testing should also provide documentation to support and inform public policies that may be required to facilitate their safe integration. We believe DMV has the authority to enhance reporting and public accountability requirements, and for this purpose, we look forward to working with you to that end.
Thank you. I have George Ivanov. One thing I forgot to ask our previous speakers is, when you get to the microphone, could you please spell your last name for the record?
Thank you. So George Ivanov, spelled I-V-A-N-O-V, and here representing Waymo. At Waymo, we've been building self-driving technologies since 2009 because we saw the massive potential to make roads safer and save lives. To date, our vehicles have self-driven over 10 million miles on public roads across 25 cities, and have virtually driven over 7 billion miles in simulation. Last December, we were excited to announce the launch of Waymo One, our first commercial ride-hailing service in metro Phoenix, which now has over 1,000 riders who hail Waymo cars each day for everyday activities including commuting to and from work, bringing their kids to school, getting to the grocery store, and more. We welcome the DMV's proposed express terms, which clarify that autonomous and fully autonomous vehicles under 10,001 pounds may transport goods and property with the appropriate DMV permit issued under the existing regulatory structure. We urge the department to expeditiously finalize the proposed language and conclude this proceeding. Logistics is an area that continues to be a vital part of the economy and where we believe self-driving can also improve outcomes and increase safety. To begin addressing these areas, Waymo began testing our self-driving technology on Class Eight heavy-duty trucks in Arizona in 2017. By early 2018, the testing extended to a successful delivery pilot in Atlanta, and yesterday we announced Waymo's continuation and expansion of testing in Arizona. Unfortunately, in California, the prohibition on testing fully autonomous vehicles over 10,001 pounds is continuing to be a severe constraint on advancing the technology for use in this state. Last year, in the federal autonomous vehicle framework AV 3.0, the U.S. Department of Transportation indicated its policy going forward that, quote, "FMCSA regulations will no longer assume that the commercial motor vehicle driver is always a human or that a human is necessarily present onboard a commercial vehicle during its operation," end quote, while also noting that, quote, "FMCSA will continue to exercise its existing statutory authority over the safe operation of the vehicle," end quote. We encourage the DMV to commence the long-anticipated rulemaking this year to enable the testing and deployment of heavy-duty autonomous and fully autonomous trucks in the state of California and align it with the current federal regulatory regime. We look forward to providing comments in that proceeding. Thank you for your time.
Last name is spelled V as in Victor, A-L-D-E-R-R-A-M-A. Just want to start by thanking the DMV for its thoughtfulness on this issue and thanking Mr. Suble and Soriano for all the work that they've put in. Neuro is a California autonomous vehicle company with more than 300 workers that is building a light-duty, custom, on-road vehicle without any human occupants, designed specifically for last-mile goods delivery. On behalf of Neuro, I stand to offer support for the speedy finalization of the proposed regulations. Neuro was founded in California with the mission to accelerate the benefits of robotics and everyday life. We are the first company in the nation providing open-to-the-public on-road autonomous goods delivery. Since last August, we have been operating out-of-state pilot programs in Arizona and Texas. If the DMV finalizes the proposed rules, we hope to offer an attractive new service and create hundreds of jobs in California as well. Allowing the operation of light-duty autonomous delivery vehicles like Neuro's robot would offer significant safety, environmental, and economic benefits to the state. These vehicles are designed for safety, with no passengers, a low operating speed, custom hardware for redundancy and reliability, and a number of, a nimbler and lighter design they propose to be amongst the safest vehicles on the road. Neuro's vehicle, like many other AVs, is also battery-electric, zero-emission vehicle projected to reduce as many emissions as 50,000 homes create annually within five years of their introduction to California. And we expect autonomous delivery vehicles will generate significant economic benefits as well, including billions of dollars in annual economic impact and thousands of new jobs in California within a few years. The proposed regulations would incorporate these vehicles into the state's existing robust regulatory framework. Today's AV regulations in California are amongst the most comprehensive in the nation and establish strong public protections for autonomous vehicles designed to transport passengers, including requirements covering insurance, safety certification, law enforcement interaction, and more. The department's proposed rule would apply this same framework to light-delivery AVs, creating a level playing field between business models and ensuring the safe operation of all autonomous vehicles in the state. We encourage the department to move quickly to finalize these proposed regulations so that companies like Neuro can begin creating jobs and offering delivery services in California. The department's oversight and permitting regime would provide strong protections for public safety and enable innovation and economic growth. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Matt Broad?
Hello. Matt Broad for the Teamsters. That's B-R-O-A-D. Just wanted to say that the Teamsters stand in opposition to the department's stated need for the proposed reg. We believe that this proposal is unnecessary, costly, and potentially dangerous. Our union is troubled that the regulator of the driving public is so concerned with observing and implementing business models opposed to the safety of drivers and passengers in California. We also believe that the department's contention that costs are minimal may be a bit myopic. We represent 100,000 UPS drivers across the state. I believe it's the largest private employer, and these drivers are in high-paid, stable, middle-class jobs. We fear that with the sort of, I guess, deployment of these vehicles, our drivers may be automated out of the workforce, and they risk falling into the social safety net. This will certainly be costly. Thank you for allowing me to state my perspective.
Thank you. Okay, that's the list of people that we have that have signed in and wish to come in and provide comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak about the regulations? Please come forward and state your full name for the record.
Candace Plotkin, P-L-O-T-K-I-N. Good morning, Mr. Suble.
Good morning.
My name is Candace Plotkin, and I represent Cruise. I appreciate the opportunity to provide our comments on the DMV's Notice of Proposed Action on Light Duty Delivery in Autonomous Vehicles. Thank you for including us in this process. Cruise is a San Francisco-based company, partnered with General Motors and Honda, focused on developing the world's most advanced self-driving vehicle. To accomplish this goal, we have already hired over 1,000 employees in California, and we are continuing to grow our California workforce. Our vehicles are purpose-built at a dedicated GM manufacturing plant in Orion, Michigan, ensuring deep hardware and software integration and full system redundancy. For Cruise, the self-driving system is not an add-on. It is the vehicle. Our fleet is comprised entirely of battery-electric, zero-emission vehicles that we intend to offer for a ride-sharing service, expanding public access to safe, zero-emission vehicles. We look forward to working with the department to ensure that autonomous technology is brought both swiftly and safely to the public. In addition to creating a ride-sharing platform, we recently announced a partnership to pilot autonomous food and grocery delivery, which we believe will benefit both residents and small businesses alike. Cruise applauds the department for its careful consideration of the issue at hand and its creation of proposed rules to allow for the introduction of autonomous delivery in California. Autonomous delivery has the potential to change all of our lives on a day-to-day basis, including expanding access to goods for consumers, supporting our merchants, particularly small businesses, and reducing vehicle emissions. To provide some context, over 40% of daily travel in the United States is motivated by shopping or errands, with the vast majority of these trips taken in single occupancy, fossil-fuel-driven vehicles. Autonomous delivery for the Cruise electric fleet would not only obviate the need for individual trips, but would ensure that each delivery is made by a zero-emission vehicle. In addition, the U.S. food delivery market is expected to grow to $90 billion by 2022, from $20 billion today. AV goods delivery will allow more restaurants to reach more consumers and keep pace with consumer needs and wants. According to a 2018 study conducted by McKinsey, semi-autonomous and autonomous vehicles can reduce last-mile parcel delivery costs in cities by as much as 40%, improving profitability for merchants and access by consumers. Allowing for autonomous delivery will also have major benefits to small businesses because it would enable more consumers to more easily access goods. In short, the opportunity for autonomous vehicles to carry and deliver goods would make more of California accessible to more Californians, regardless of where they live or their ability to shop in person. California has a unique opportunity to continue to demonstrate leadership in this area. Cruise agrees with the framework the DMV has offered respect to light-duty autonomous delivery, and believes that the DMV has struck the right balance between innovation and safety. We recognize that these are the only regulations that will govern light-duty vehicles with respect to delivery, and agree that there is a need for two tracks to separately address light and heavy-duty vehicles. We also believe that the DMV should adopt an approach that is business-model neutral. Consistent with that goal, we are suggesting a clarification to the proposal. As drafted, the DMV rules would prohibit an AV manufacturer from receiving compensation or charging consumers during testing. However, we do not believe that this prohibition extends to third parties who are not AV manufacturers. In an end-to-end model, where a party is both the AV manufacturer and delivery service provider, that company would have the ability to absorb costs and provide the flexibility needed to operate within this model. In contrast, an entity that wishes to engage in goods delivery through a partnership model under the proposed rules is placed at a disadvantage. The issue is that partners who are not AV manufacturers cannot recoup costs that are completely unrelated to the developer of AV technology under the current framework. Established companies in the delivery space deliver value to customers by connecting them to restaurants, processing orders and payments, and connecting human drivers to those orders. Such a company should not have to forego its revenues simply because the order is delivered by an AV. As long as the AV manufacturer, us, is not compensated, the profit motive concern in the AV testing rules is not implicated. As a result, we propose that the DMV confirm that non-AV manufacturers may receive compensation beyond the cost of goods if the AV manufacturer does not receive fees. Alternatively, Cruise proposes a minor modification, which was reflected in our submitted brief. The modification would preserve the critical distinction between the testing and deployment phases because the AV manufacturer would still not receive compensation for delivery testing.
Just one quick question.
Yes.
If someone is being compensated, what's the difference between the manufacturer testing the vehicle and actually deploying it?
So the difference, and let me make sure that I understand the question correctly. For us, Cruise, AV manufacturer, in the testing phase, we would not receive any compensation, and in the deployment phase, we would have the ability to receive compensation for delivery fees. But I'm drawing a distinction between us as the AV manufacturer and a third party that we partner with that's already in the delivery space. So as an example, if we were to partner with Grubhub or DoorDash or any of these established partners, they have certain costs that they already incur, the cost of, for example, the individual who picks up the delivery from the vehicle and brings it to the customer, or service fees to maintain their platform. I'm arguing that those fees that they already charge, that's basically their sunk business costs, they should not have to change their business model to remove that fee as long as we, as the AV manufacturer, do not receive any portion of those fees that they are charging. In the same way that you carve out the cost of a good as a distinct fee that isn't implicated by the framework, saying the cost of, for example, paying an individual to hand-deliver a good should also be carved out, because that's not actually a cost that's going towards the development of AV technology.
But if I talked to the gentleman that represented Neuro, who would be a competitor, who's building their own vehicle and doing all of that, because they're the manufacturer and they're doing the delivery, they wouldn't be able to recover those costs. But someone that exercises a perceived loophole and partners up with some third party to do it, they would be able to receive the cost, and I wonder, how is that establishing a level playing field?
I would say two things. One is that the issue, it creates, the current situation creates an uneven playing field because there aren't incentives for partners to enter this space, and there is a different business case to be made in the partnership model. But in addition, you could extend the same rule to both the end-to-end model and the partnership model, and you could just carve out additional costs that are unrelated to the development of AV technology and still keep your line between testing and deployment. So as an example, if Neuro hires an individual to basically just take the good from the vehicle and bring it to the consumer, the cost of paying that individual could be carved out in both models because it doesn't actually implicate the profit motive. There isn't money that's being diverted to the development of AV technology during the testing phase. So there are ways that you could establish a playing field between both business models.
Not to argue for Neuro, but have you seen their vehicle? There isn't a place for a person to be in it, so they wouldn't have the capacity to have a person. They'd have to have a chase car with the autonomous vehicle to do that. Otherwise, they wouldn't need the autonomous vehicle, right? So I guess the issue for us is that we're establishing a regulation that allows for the testing of a technology, and that's the focus of no compensation. So that's why I'm trying to understand the distinction between the testing of the technology and the actual deployment of the technology where compensation is acceptable.
No, I understand.
Trying to get your thoughts on that.
Yeah, of course. And, you know, it's a complicated topic, distinguishing between the testing and the deployment phase, and I understand the department's focus on safety and the fact that that should be the ultimate focus of all parties involved. I'm simply trying to make the argument that the core value that we're all trying to preserve is that during testing, AV manufacturers... is that during testing, AV manufacturers do not receive compensation, that they do not profit during the testing phase, and I think that if we maintain that bright rule and parties attest that they are not receiving compensation as the manufacturer, that that would achieve the department's goals.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I will just end by saying thank you for your leadership in developing the proposed rules. We appreciate all of your attention to this matter and your willingness to consider these issues, and we're always available to speak further.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that we missed that may want to come forward and give a comment right now? Got to flip back to my script. Since we've now heard from our final speaker, I'm going to declare the hearing closed just as next steps. We will review the comments that we've received today, determine whether or not there's a necessity to change anything that we've already proposed. If we do make changes to the proposal, that will require another 15-day notice upon which we would receive written comments. After that, it would be finalizing the rulemaking and then submitting to the Office of Administrative Law for approval of the proposal. So at that, I'll also mention that we will accept written comments, or any additional evidence that you may have be presented to be submitted by close of business today. That can be submitted electronically to the email address ladregulations@dmv.ca.gov. I really appreciate all of you that have come here today to participate in this hearing, and with that, we're going to go ahead and close the record. Thank you.